Awesome. It looks like we are recording, so I will call our work session to order of July 26, 2022. It is 5:00 PM and we have a little under two hours and we have two items. The first one is the preliminary preview of the 2023 prelim budget. And then have a long-term financial planning update as summarized in the key financial strategy spreadsheet. And then preview of proposed utility rates, proposed city fees, and proposed 2023 capital improvement budget and 2024 through 2027 capital improvement budget. The second item is a presentation and discussion of staff spending recommendations for the city's remaining allocation of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds as established under ARPA. I will pass it to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a full agenda for our work session tonight, so I'm going to dive right in. I will try and pause periodically for questions, but please interrupt me as we go along. We have, we're looking for high-level feedback on the proposed budgets, the fees and the levy and the capital improvement plan and budget. We are still seeking your guidance and finalizing the budgets. And you'll have a chance to hear from them about them on August 17th and ask more questions. And then that, from there, we will adopt a preliminary levy on September 13th and have a truth in taxation meeting on December 6th, and then finally adopt the budget in December and the levy. As predicted, 2023 was a tough budget. We're struggling with a record-breaking type labor market. I don't know if you had a chance to read the press, but Minnesota has the lowest unemployment rate at 1.8% of any state and any state ever in history since they've been reporting it. We also are, just like everyone else, struggling with high costs due to high inflation. And for the personnel, since personnel is 70% plus of the general fund, it's hard to keep costs down when you've got those kind of pressures. We also had to absorb the 65th Street debt service of $430,000 in this year's budget. Some revenues are not bouncing back as expected. We still hope that passport fees will bounce back, but some of the revenues are likely not to bounce back. So some of our fines and some of the recreation revenues, for example, like softball rentals, just changing trends. We have increased the equipment and tech levy. We're increasing it by 4% going forward. And what they used to do, what previous finance director used to do, is increase it by only 5,000 each year, and that's just not keeping up. And I'm not even sure that 4% will because that, that, those, that equipment is being hard hit by inflation. The guidance this year was to keep budgets at 0% for the revised 2022. That's typical. We did bump up the parameters for the 2023 proposed budget to 4% just to recognize the increased cost pressures. Most of the budgets were within those parameters, so that's actually pretty impressive. Still, the proposed levy increase is 6.6%, and that's mostly due to the revenues not growing as quickly and also the additional debt service. Just note that 6.6% is less than the tax base growth, which was about 12.3%. So here's the actual calculations for the proposed levy. And this is how it stacks up compared to previous years. And I'll just pause here. Are there questions at this point? Keep going. So this is the impact on the average home. There was 16.1% average increase to the home values this year. That's, that's a lot. It was pretty high throughout the metro. Some cities were higher than us, but we were, we were one of the higher cities in terms of. So that boosted the average home from 266,000 to 309,000 dollars. And with the proposed tax rate, that would be an increase from last year, again on the average home, from 1,428 to 1,590. It's a $162 increase. Now, if you happen to live in a home that had no market value gains, which is unlikely, it would actually be a decrease because our tax rate is decreasing. But most homes, like I said, if not all, had solid increases. Just to put that $162 into perspective, in 2022, it was 137.
Councilmember Russell. So to clarify, the tax base is growing, that's why it's spread out over a larger area? So that's why the rate is dropping?
That is correct. Yep. We add, we added 75 million in, in, in new tax base, but then most of the gains were the market value gains. And residential was, was the, gained the most value. The values. Commercial and industrial did not gain as, at such a high clip.
Councilmember Whalen.
Yeah. Just to make a comment, I think this is, I mean, a growing tax base is a great thing on budget day, but just as a probably a note for later, I don't expect anyone, council or staff, to have answers to this now, but just, this is completely shifting who we are as a community. I bought a home here three years ago. I already could not afford it if I was trying to buy it today. And so I think, I mean, I know we talk a ton about housing affordability in terms of like programs for individuals, but, and I, I don't know that we can control a market trend, but think it's worth a broader conversation at some point that who can live here? Who can call Richfield Home is shifting pretty dramatically.
Councilmember Chapman.
Can I just make sure I'm summarizing that our, our budget is increasing by 6.6%, but the, for the tax rate itself is going down? No.
The budget is actually not. The budget is increasing by 3.84% of the general fund budget. But because the revenues are not increasing as much, then there's a gap there. But also, $430,000 got added with debt service.
Got it.
So that's the main driver.
Alright, thank you.
I was able to find the increases. It was, for commercial property, it was 4.2%. Industrial, I was, it was 13.6%, so that was actually pretty high, but we don't have industrial property. Apartments, 5.5%, and residential condos, 5.8%. Again, single-family homes, 16.1%.
Councilmember Afar to agree.
Just because you said 75 million was new development, do you know roughly how much, like what dollar amount or so is the, just increase of value of what was already there?
You know, and I don't, I have to do the math and I, I can't do it on my head, sorry.
Yeah, it's not version I was going through.
We get to that spreadsheet, but I, yeah, I'd have to, if somebody else wants to do the math while I keep going. The staffing update, we added, we actually added three staff, three and a half staff additions in the 2022 revised. There's none proposed in 2023. Two firefighters to increase to those shifts of nine. It's really been needed because their calls have increased dramatically. It's, it's mostly absorbed by lower overtime costs. And then a new manager at the community center. And this was mostly absorbed because we're eliminating a part-time position. And here's where you get to the increased costs, Councilmember.
Councilmember Whalen.
Yeah, sorry. I, I know we can't take a ton of time on it, but I don't, I knew the, the firefighters thing was happening. I don't think we've been in the space yet to hear from Chief Dobash about it. If you just want to say, it sounded like it was successful, helpful, if you just want to say a bit more about the impact of that.
Yeah, so the, the pilot study that we did the first few months of this year showed that we dramatically reduced our overtime. We were a little bit pessimistic about the numbers, just simply because in the winter, there's not a lot of people taking vacation and things like that. But certainly, as we got to April, May, and then as June kind of started, we were still seeing a pretty significant impact on overtime savings. So we're confident going into next year that we'll probably save about $200,000 in our overtime, which is pretty significant when you're looking at adding two positions to what you already have in the budgets.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? So again, the, the increase for the general fund was 3.84%. That's from 2022 adopted for the proposed general fund. And, and that's lower than it's been in previous years. Since 2015, it's been about 4%, 4.04%. The revised 2023, 2022 budget, my apologies, was actually a slight decrease, mostly due to open positions, but it was very slight. And I will ask Finance Manager Verna to go through the general fund numbers.
Thanks, Katie. So on this slide, we have provided comparative analysis of general fund revenues. In 2022, general fund revenue has been revised down 166,000 at $27.7 million. The change is primarily due to the service charges, including passport fee and recreation programs. We originally budgeted for service charges, hoping of full recovery from pandemic in 2022, but that did not happen, so we revised down these charges to be more realistic based on the current year-to-date trends. And please note that a significant portion of the lower recreation program revenue is offset by decrease in recreation program expenditures related to adult fitness, senior programs, et cetera. Total general fund revenue for 2023 is projected to be $28.9 million, which is nearly 1.07 million or 3.8% higher than the 2022 budgeted revenue. The higher projected revenues are attributed to nearly 9% estimated increase in business licenses and permits, a 2.9% increase in intergovernmental aid and proposed 6% tax revenue increase. Revenue from charges for services is projected to be lower by 11%, again reflecting a more informed view of the post-pandemic recovery. Next slide, please. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
I just have a quick question on the, the fines and forfeitures. All, all the other numbers are different and that one seems identical here, the fines and forfeitures. I guess there's a $2,000 difference. Is that just kind of how it happened? Is that the, is that a coincidence that it's the same, or is that?
That, that's based on the.
Councilmember Chapman, I can answer that. It's based upon, obviously, ticket revenue and our split with the county and state. So where we're tracking now in 2022, even for the revision, it may be a little bit higher, but obviously with the amount of time we're spending on calls and less traffic, then we're probably going to be somewhere around that same dollar amount in 2023 proposed.
Thanks.
Moving on to the general fund expenditure. So here's a comparative analysis of 2022 original budget, revised version and 2023 proposed. Revised 22 expenditure is estimated at 27.7 million, which is 0.6% or 166,000 lower than the original budget or adopted budget. Expense savings fully offset the, offset the impact of revised lower revenue that we discussed in the, in the, in the previous slide. Savings have been reflected across all departments except for finance, which is currently in the rebuilding phase due to staffing changes. As the city manager shared earlier, a total of three new staff positions have been added in 2022 revised budget, and the additional staffing cost will be offset by the lower overtime cost in the fire department and elimination of a supervisor position in recreation services. Total general fund expenditure for 2023 is estimated at $28.9 million, which is 3.84% or 1.0, 1.06 million higher than the 2022 budget. The increase is due to personal services, including annual merit and step increases and any employee benefits provided by the city. Questions? And the next one is the history of city's capital reserves. So you would see the capital reserve balance since 2013 on this, on this slide. The reserve balance has mostly been trending up since last several years. At the end of fiscal year 2021, the reserve had a balance of nearly $8 million, excluding the alpha points of $1.95 million. Although the reserves are, they look higher at $8 million, but Katie and I have discussed and we have some concerns about these reserve balances. And Katie is going to be sharing more thoughts around that just in a minute. So over to Katie.
Thanks. So the capital reserve fund, now this is separate from the general fund, fund balance. We have a policy to keep 40% of current year expenditures there, and that's about 10 and a half million at the end of 2021. This was built with excess local government aid funding. And they, staff were transferring it over and building it up. It's been used periodically to buy down debt, internal loans, some transfers to funds that were, you know, like the IT fund to keep up with expenses. We also have scheduled, as you know, we've scheduled transfers from this fund to help smooth out property taxes for the general fund. Now, so far in 2020 and 2021, we have not had to use those, and we won't use them unless we need them. In 2020, we've got, we got the CARES funding, and so we were able to add to the fund at that time. Now, the balance in 2020 and 2021, it looks like it was increased by 1.5 million. It actually stayed flat, fairly flat. In 20, in 2020, that, that balance at 6.6 million, it didn't reflect about $2 million of like estimated working cash because you, the, we wanted, the staff didn't show it because they thought that it was scheduled for transfers. But I'm showing the full balance here, so I just wanted to make clear that it did not increase from 2020 to 2021. It's about the same. So although that fund looks healthy, there are negative balances in the ice arena and the pool. We do have a plan now to bring down those negative balances and bring them into the black by transferring it over seven years. Also, plan to transfer from the general fund to stabilize the property tax increases, but it is now declining. It's 500,000 in 2023, but it declines to zero in 2026. Again, this year, we had to absorb the debt service. The plan is in 2027, it's just one time because the Niclet project is planning, is planned in the, is programmed in the county budget in 2026. And we have retiring debt coming off in 2028. So it would just be at one time, transfer in '27 to cover that debt service. So it's just a bridge. So with all of that, the estimated capital reserve balance in 2028 is estimated to be about 2.5 to 3 million. Again, Finance Manager Kamu, Verna and I, we have, we're uncomfortable that it's not getting replenished, but I do feel that if you're ending at that 2.5, 3 million, that it's a reasonable plan. Now that Manager Verna is on board though, she'll be doing a much more detailed, long-term financial plan and also coming up with appropriate targets for these reserves.
You have a question, City Manager? So you said 2.5 to 3 million. What is the 40% that, that's a policy, right?
So that's a separate fund. So this is a capital reserve project fund, and it was created, again, with that excess LGA. This is not your general fund. In the general fund, we have a general fund balance, and that is about 10.5 million. And that, that is also there in case you had excessive costs. So you've got two, two reserves.
Uh, some members up?
So could you say that basically you're simplifying everything instead of saying programs are running in the red and doing all this stuff? That you're just collapsing it all and having one number for it?
So the, the auditors have recommended, and we also get questioned by the, the rating agencies about the negative fund balance in the ice arena and the pool. And so last year, we developed a plan to gradually over time bring those into the black. And so that, it won't be combined. It'll be overtime, these transfers. But then also, we've got transfers to stabilize and smooth out those property tax increases. But unlike last year, we've got a plan and we, we have an estimate of what it will be in 2028. And, and then we should not be having to transfer annually. We should not be, have to transfer annually after 2026.
Chapman.
Yeah, silly question, but is, if the, the ratings agencies have questions about the balance and we have the reserves, there, is it, what's the, what's the rationale for just writing these in, in, in one year and not writing them or writing them over time?
Yeah. Manager Verna is going to look at that question. Our former finance director was more comfortable doing it over time. And, and, and there's, there's reasons to do that, right? It, it maintains a healthy reserve in case you have extraordinary costs or, but yes, we're going to look at it.
I was going to just clarify both for myself and for anyone listening and trying to follow along. This is still kind of, all of the action steps and process are sort of the subtext of how we get to, in 2028, a significantly better financial outlook just based on debt rolling off and how TIF districts, like that is still kind of the, I don't want to say the light at the end of the tunnel, but like that it, it looks a lot less tight at that point, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Further questions?
So this is, I know it's hard to see, and I did attach two Excel spreadsheets to your staff report. But the 10-year forecast, it's got conservative revenue growth at 3%. That's with the exception of local government aid and property taxes. We bumped expenditures to 4.5% in '24 and '25 because we expect there to continue to be labor pressures, labor cost pressures, and also inflationary cost pressures. Also, as we catch up on technology, it's going to be increasing costs. To implement M365, we're, we estimate it's going to be about $100,000 each year. Now, we're requesting ARPA to help with that in this year and next year, but in 2024, the general fund will have to absorb it. As you know, the major TIFs are, three major TIFs are rolling off in 2020, or decertifying in 2025, and you'll see the impact in 2026. It adds $2.6 million to our tax base. That's, that's a lot. But it also reduces the LGA funding by about $370,000 for three years. And it also, because we collect admin fees as part of that TIP revenue, it's going to have an impact on the HRA and the CD budgets. I have added to the CD budget $200,000 from 2026 on, but I, I, we don't have the HRA on this spreadsheet. Any questions? So we've made progress in the long-term forecast. It is more stable and realistic. But as I mentioned, Manager Verna plans a more in-depth review, and we'll be working on, you know, target fund reserves and future debt policy as part of strategic planning initiatives. We still have unmet capital needs, especially in recreation. And we're scheduled to present options for additional revenues. We've got, scheduled on September 27th to present the options in the process for a local option sales tax. Any, any proposed franchise fee increase is likely to be modest, and Director Asher has more information on that later. So proposed city fees, I don't have a lot more to add. There's a long list that we attached to your staff report, and I think City Clerk Sinning does a good job explaining where we're proposing the increase and what the reasons are. And I'm just here to see if you have any questions on it. Director Asher will present utility, proposed utility fee increases.
So I'll go through the three utilities and then briefly talk about franchise. So typical chart, every year, we, we compare this year's water. Next year, we're looking at a 5% increase. First, the per thousand gallons, what that does. Off from tiers. Cash balance looks low. We don't want to go below 1 million. We're at 292. Our target is 1.9. That fluctuates though because we're constantly collecting our load every week, so. If there's a question. This is our outlook then, with a 5% increase in 2023 and then projecting 3% increases throughout 2028. Redline is, we don't want to go below. That, we had a 3% across the board, making a 5% for next year popped up 2028 above the redline. So that was what we did, and when we did that, we actually just barely increased percent. There's any, I can just go through a couple of things. The utilities started taking on debt service with the Lindell Avenue Bridge, so I think you're all aware of kind of splitting it out between utilities. So that's kind of what's happening is every time we do a project, it's hitting these funds too now. So I suspect those increases. And right now, so just to compare, our current debt service for water is 640,000 a year, and that'll jump to 740 after six. A $1 million estimated refreeze pair. Water rates comparison chart, participating cities and metro. Water, similarly, I said, like I said, a 0% increase for next year. Our cash balance fluctuates. It looks pretty good. This is the first year, so like 70% of this budget is about council charges. This is the first time in, I think, five years maybe that it's actually increased. Probably why the fund is doing so well. Have been lining. Forecasting it, again, with, you have the debt service kind of rolling on here and there. And then big drop in 2025 is the education center. If that does happen at the water plant, we're planning, right now it's reflecting about $500,000 investment into that. Then, yes.
Councilmember Whalen.
I was just going to ask to the lining question, are we still barring any major catastrophes on track that if we continue lining at the pace we're going and funding it how we are, that that will cover things? Or are we anticipating in a few years that we need to come up with a better funding source to do more at once?
I think we're at a good, good pace right now.
Okay, thank you.
And it has been improving, like we're doing.
And it has been improving, like we're doing all our trouble spots, so. And similarly, our rate comparison. So I mean, we did that rate study in 2016, I wanna say, and we did a, you know, a pretty big hike in our, all of our rates at that time, and we've been increasing. So we have dropped, which is higher end, right? And it used to be in the middle, just above the middle, now we're just. And then stormwater, uh, 5% increase. 5%, moving it. What's, um, this is a flat rate, so you'll see at a 5% increase, that's about $4.36.
This is similar to the question that Councilmember Waylon had. You've been like repairing like boxes to the stormwater system, are we on schedule to cover those or?
We are, so stormwater is the most questionable, and that's causing the most problems, that's what advanced Lyndale, when you did up to Lyndale, wasn't, our storm structures were failing. So the structures or the manholes are what we've, we're on track, I think, um, I actually noted that. We'll be through all of them by the 2025. We're having them, and we're just starting to have mains and kind of televise, clean them and televise them and see what condition. We're looking at the most critical first. So what's budgeted for stormwater in that respect is about two, some years 200, some years 300, and main line repair, about 200.
Ramin?
Can I just ask a really big picture question that, uh, I, growing up in Minnesota, we have great water, it seems exceedingly abundant. And we read especially about what's happening in the southwest with water shortages. I know it's a resource we share with everybody, it's obviously very vital. Do you have any concerns generationally with our, our water table and the reservoirs that we have, is that?
No.
That's great.
Neither does the Department of Health.
That's great.
It's more the quality and the energy content for our water source.
How's, how's that looking? Since we're, since you brought up the subject.
We're, we're doing good, I'm sure here. You know, Edina's got wells down and just, they just. Our stormwater fund outlook includes a $500,000 price take for the hub. We anticipate Asher will have them on the stormwater fix. Yeah, again, this has the debt service, we're at about, by the, we're at about 750, or 560 and then. Um, I did wanna bring up that we're doing a rate affordability assessment, which was part of our strategic plan. Um, just got them on board, and so, all some time, we'll have a study that will, um, help us, us. So we're trying to kind of keep the rates down, even though they're not, it's 3%, 5%, 5%. So. We're, we're excited for it, but we're also open to. So we started the franchise fee in 2004, and the last time we increased it was. So it's $4.10 on both Cent standpoint and Excel bills, so it's $8.10 a month for residential accounts. We picked 400,000 as our cash balance because this is primarily maintenance, I mean, our payment management program and some forestry work. And so we didn't wanna go too high, but we don't wanna go too low in case something blows up, we have a bad freestyle or something, and we're out there doing. So we have a really good balance at the end of this year. And then we've got a couple of big projects, we're starting to kind of identify this fund for things like 494. So we asked them to do some millon overlay, and then we have lighting that we have to cover for their, all the bridges and, and on the drainage road. So that's, that's coming out of here. Um, then there is 77th Street Railroad Crossing, that's 450,000 that we don't, typically, we would have used state aid money for that, but we don't have any state aid money. So we need a fund. And then we'll have our last big reclamation project that will, um, about 500,000 that will cover the last of the, the millon overlay, so. So what we hope to develop over the winter is our long-term maintenance plan for all of the residential roads and. Oh, and then what Katie was saying, there is a little bit more capacity in franchise fee to increase if we wanted to or if we needed to. And we plan to explore that next year, and it would be implemented in 2024.
Um, what, what are the limits on the franchise fees?
It's 5% of the gross revenue that the utility brings in.
Okay, so do you know what that is compared to what you have?
So I did a real quick calc, I think we have another 400,000 that we could.
But how, like you said, it's about $4 each per bill for a household, do you know what that looks like if that were maxed out? Or like, tell me if I support the whole idea, so.
Oh, yeah, I, I did calculate that, but I don't, I didn't write it down. Um, it's not, it's not a big jump.
Okay, okay.
I wanna say maybe a dollar, but I, I have it at, I guess.
Councilmember Seppel?
Is there a concern if more people are streaming and there's less cable, is that affecting?
No, this is, uh, uh, power, so it's electric, gas.
So this is just power, it's not the cable right away and stuff, okay.
Council, and City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you. It is a concern with the cable franchise, though. That is, we are, that revenue is declining very quickly, and it funds our communication, uh, special service fund, um, and our communication. We're renegotiating for that last, probably last 10-year.
Councilmember Waylon?
Um, for a franchise fee like that, is that, it sounds like they just pass that on to people?
Yes, yes, it shows up on the bill lists.
Okay, there's no way to like actually tax their revenues directly?
Um.
At our, at the city level? Okay, okay.
Streetlight user fee is not unchanged here. Probably close to 10.
Question?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
About streetlights, so like, right now, I mean, the side streets have kind of a consistent level of quality. If in the future, say, in reconstructions, we offer the option for homeowners to choose an upgraded option, like getting the Shepherd's Court lights in their neighborhood, is there a means to charge them a different rate if they agree to that, or would the only option be like special assessment for the install?
Um, that's a good question, I think we could probably figure out how to do that with the system, because we charge different properties different things, I'm sure.
Okay, just like long-term, it might be nice to give people options if they do wanna pay for upgrades.
Um, just 'cause you don't have, like, for the other ones, um, just like a, create a sizable fund where we have a fund balance, I guess I'm just wondering like why, why we pay for streetlights on 494 bridges, not out of a streetlight fund?
Oh, yeah, um, that's a good question. This pays for electricity and maintenance, you can't pay for capital and.
That's it, okay.
The only thing, if we did have a fund balance, which we were kind of hoping we'd have a fund balance, and we suspected we might have a little one, we would be using it for LED changeouts, I think.
Oh, yes, okay.
And that, and that would be appropriate. Back to me, um, this is just a, a high-level overview of the capital improvement budget and the 2024 to 2027 capital improvement plan. We will be posting the proposed capital budget online in the next few days. Uh, council members will have a chance to ask more questions during the August 17th budget presentation. So the, this is the, the process, and actually, the planning commission meeting was last night, and they did find that the proposed, uh, budgets are, they do conform to the comprehensive plan, and they've recommended it, uh, to me, and I will be bringing it forward. And again, we're posting it soon, and you'll have a chance to ask questions in August. These are the breakdown of the different projects. We have traditionally divided them into recreation, open space, right-of-way, which is, you know, our streets and our, our pipe, and then public facilities. And the majority of the, the budget is right-of-way. Um, the bulk of the projects are the 77th Street underpass, which is due to be completed fall of 2023, and the 65th Street reconstruction, which started Monday. And that also is due to be finished, to, due to finish in 2023. Much of the planned, uh, improvement projects for facilities is focused on the water treatment plant, which was built in 1963. Um, the, the improvements plan for parks and recreation, uh, total of 640,000. This is the funding by source. Uh, it's a long list and a messy pie chart, uh, but that's, that's good. Uh, our staff work hard to leverage funding from federal, state, and county levels, um, to finance our capital. This is the plan projects, it totals 70 million dollars. Although right-of-way is still a major, the majority of the planned capital spending for the next four years. You'll see that a large chunk is, um, planned for recreation and open space. And part of that is our, the plans for the new Wood Lake Nature Center building, and that project, the total project budget is 20 million dollars. Again, 70 million, it seems like a lot for four years, um, but it's a struggle to find funding for capital improvement. We definitely still have unmet needs. You know, our infrastructure was largely built in the 50s and the 60s, and so much of it is past its useful life. Uh, and I am gonna pass it on to City Engineer Powers, so he can provide more details on the public works-led budgets, and I'm gonna make room for him.
Thanks, City Manager Rodriguez, hi, Councilwoman Mayor. Just very, very quick little update on a couple of our big projects we have going on currently, and a couple of big projects we have on the horizon. Uh, first one is our 77th Street Underpass project. Happy to report that the project's going really well, we've had, um, some minor issues with the supply chain, like everybody else is, and some little minor delays, but the contractor's been able to make those up. Uh, we're looking at substantial completion of Washington Park, hopefully within the next, um, six to eight weeks. And so we're anticipating being able to open that park for use sometime next year, depending on how long it takes us next spring to kind of get the fields all grown and ready for, uh, ready for use. And then substantial completion of the entire project in fall of next year, getting the new Ridgefield Parkway opened up and 77th Street. Um, just a couple of pictures, the first one is looking west on 77th Street, so we've actually got some pavement down on 77th Street already this summer. And then looking, uh, towards east underneath the, a couple of the new bridges going under Highway 77. So if, um, if anyone's interested in going out and seeing the project, please let me know, and we can set up, uh, tours for you and drive-throughs if you'd like to see it. Uh, second big project, just started yesterday with construction, is our 65th Street reconstruction project. So again, if you'd like to go see the project, right now it's a lot of signs and barrels and pavement getting torn up. But going relatively smoothly so far, we're kind of working out the kinks of the first few days of construction, and planning on being, uh, complete with that project in fall of next year. So I think we've shared with the council that the, basically, the western and eastern ends of the project will be completed this year. We'll suspend construction over the winter, and then complete the middle portion, including the roundabout at Lyndale Avenue next summer. No pretty pictures for these, but just a couple of the large projects we have upcoming in the next few years. Currently, we've programmed for 2025, uh, 69th Street Emergency Water Main Interconnect and Road Reconstruction Project. I've shared with the council in the past some of the background on this project. Uh, we're having some of those conversations with the city of Edina, um, to hopefully come to an agreement on doing an emergency water main interconnect, and, uh, possibly some arrangement to be able to sell water to the city of Edina if they're so inclined. 2027, we have programmed a 70th Street reconstruction project, that is between, uh, 5th Avenue and going westward to 2nd Avenue, which is the, uh, where the storm main outlets into Norbe Pond for that area. So we have stormwater drainage from a large section of Portland Avenue that flows through a main on 70th Street. Uh, currently, we're monitoring that storm sort of trunk line on 70th, um, and the whole project really is gonna be driven by the condition of that line when it, we expect it will require replacement within the next five years. And when that, uh, time comes, then we'll kick off that project and, for that reconstruction. Um, as with all of our reconstruction projects, we'll have a robust public engagement process for that project and inform the, uh, design of that roadway. And then, uh, 2027, we have programmed 76th Street West reconstruction. That would be a, a full street reconstruction, um, again, a public engagement process, ideally reducing that, uh, roadway down to a three-lane section, adding improved pedestrian bicycle connections, burying the existing overhead power lines that run along that whole corridor, and just really better streetscape for the residents along that, that corridor. A couple of county projects, uh, county has programmed in their CIP now for 2026, Nicollet Avenue reconstruction. So we're confident that that project is going to be moving forward, the county has it programmed. Design work is scheduled to kick off here, probably by the end of the year with, uh, with the city and the county, and we'll be very, uh, very much involved. It'll be a multiple-year process, um, you know, along the same kind of scope as 66th Street was a few years ago. Uh, then the second is the Penn Avenue reconstruction. The asterix there, uh, notating that that project is going to be driven by Hennepin County, applying for a regional solicitation grant application for federal money to construct that project. So if, if they do not receive that grant application, then the status of that project probably changes and gets pushed out. We continue to encourage the county to forward with that project, because we know it's a priority for the community and for the county.
Seppel?
So when you mentioned about hopefully going to three lanes, we've done a lot of that, and I've been pleased with it, so this isn't the point of the question. But at the legislature this year, I think one of the legislators from Rochester wanted to make it so you couldn't get municipal state aid if it was a three-lane project. So would that cause us to have to shift which roads are municipal state aid, or we, we just lose a chunk of funding?
Do you know the answer to that, or I'm not sure?
I do, we would lose most of our funding, because the only four-lane road we have is 77th Street.
That would be something we would really probably wanna work against, very much so.
Um, and, and I know the, the city and the league of Minnesota cities jumped on that right of way when that discussion started to strongly oppose that. I haven't heard anything in a couple of months as to whether anything's, or that discussion, but yes, we would lobby against that.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Just to follow up on that first, so I thought that was intended to discourage future conversions, are you saying that any currently two- or three-lane MSAs street can't get funding?
That was the clarification that I got when I asked.
That's, that's, I mean.
And it would expand accordingly.
Yeah, okay. My main question was that you went off this list. I was curious, so 76th Street West, we have a regional solicitation thing out for it, is there intent to proceed even if we don't get that money, or?
We would like to proceed, it will depend on us, uh, pursuing other funding sources. So I think if we were not awarded the regional solicitation application, we'd have to get creative and find some other funding sources, and it might mean pushing that project out here. here, too, if that's the case.
Another question is, 70th, you said it's driven by this stormwater facility between Second and Portland. Is that the only section we reconstructed, or is the entire Lyndale the senior section that would be?
No, so the intent for the reconstruction would just be that portions from Second to 50th Avenue, I believe.
Okay. And then just to say, I'm delighted to see Nicollet back on the list. It seems like the county has bounced that around between a specific year and like a beyond 2027 type thing, so do we feel like this is firm at this point?
Yeah, we're pretty confident on that at this point. They've actually published a preliminary schedule for design and construction on their website now.
Okay, cool. And it, it is the entire length of material, or is it just a specific section?
Yeah, it would be, I believe it's 66th Street to 76th Street.
Okay. But, and we're assuming south of 77th, at least it's part of 494, right?
Yes.
Right.
Director Asher?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to add on 76th Street, I think it's reflected in CIP as, well, it's mostly storm, there's a couple utilities, but it's in the CIP as if it didn't have a regional system.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we defined specifically in our CIP sheets, we said it's, it's shown as probably being funded as street reconstruction bonds, but we intend to offset that as much as we possibly can with it.
So, getting back to Nicollet, the traffic signal upgrades and all that, it looked like it got postponed for a year. Is that because it's now going to be built into this project, or what happens with?
The ADA stuff, is that right?
Yeah.
Did that get postponed? I thought they removed it.
The, as the, like, the pedestrian ramp improvements?
Well, some of it, it sounded like some of it got postponed the last I heard, but I might not be all right.
Oh, the, oh, the, um, the 70th and 76th Street improvements. So, what happened where there was the, the county bid that project, and bids came in much higher than anticipated. So, they've told the city that they've gone back to the drawing board and are kind of rethinking the scope of those projects. They intend, I believe, to rebid those projects either this fall or next spring. But one of their considerations that they told us now is looking specifically if there's things that they can leave out of the project at this point that could be a construction project, or doing a little bit more investigation into making sure that what they build in the next year or two. Because that was a, a concern that the city raised to the county.
Director Chapman?
Mayor, just to have a question. I'm very pleased, this is the first time I've ever seen the Penn Avenue reconstruction on a slide with a date. It feels like a big deal, even if it has an asterisk on it. But I was just curious for any information about that in terms of the, the grant process. Yeah, I know it's the county's application, but is there anything we can do to, to help that application along? I'm just, any, any information would be helpful.
At this point, the application's submitted. I don't think there's anything we could do at this time. If they weren't awarded the application, the regional solicitation funding is available every two years to the Metropolitan Council. So presumably, if they weren't awarded this year, they would submit again. I would, I would guess if it's not awarded, one of the big factors will be maybe a lack of demonstrated public engagement. The city's position is that we've done a lot of public engagement, and I think we could try to assist the county in better presenting that, perhaps.
Valen?
Just realizing, 494 is not up here, and I know we have some amount of cost participation. Do we have a final answer on the exact price tag for that, or is that still in process?
I can answer that, yeah. We don't have an answer on the final price tag at this point. We, as Director Asher mentioned in the franchise fee balance, we have some of those items, like some pavement rejuvenation on 12th Avenue, Melon Overlight, some lighting costs are a pretty good idea of. So, we, we have a relatively good idea of the capital cost. It's, it's pretty close. What's still very much up in the air is what the city's maintenance responsibilities and long-term costs are going to be. We're, we're in active discussion, I guess I'll call it, with Mid-Ad at, at this point, kind of multiple meetings a week and elevating some things, you know?
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that's everything I have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and always, for our capital investments, we see a lot of our funds going towards the Wood Lake Nature Center building. We also have money set aside for our other major project, and that's the pool. And we're, we're currently with the Wood Lake Nature Center building project. As you know, we requested $10 million through the bonding process, and we had great tours with our House and Senate committees out at the nature center, and we had a lot of support in the ongoing. They did not have a special session. I have given up all hope. There maybe is a chance after November, they would call a special session, but we are well poised. I think with support from both sides of the aisle for that funding. So, I'm still hopeful. We also requested $5 million of congressionally directed spending, and it went through a House appropriations bill, and $3 million was secured for the project, and now moves on to the Senate bill. So hopefully, we retain at least $3 million of the $5 million that's been requested. I continue to work with our manager, Paul Smithson, and our city manager, Rodriguez, and looking at, still filling in that gap of $7 million. So, we are exploring different project partners. We had a great meeting yesterday with Three Rivers and some of our other key stakeholders, and how can we fill in this gap and collaboratively get this project done for the community and the region? And the other large capital project request is, of course, our pool. You know, it was originally built in 1961, and we're not alone in, in having this need. A lot of other cities have older pool facilities that just need major reinvestment. We have a, a super talented staff at the arena and pool, and, and there's a picture of Bob this year mixing concrete by himself and pouring it and working on a lot of the piping every year that has to be fixed. With an old facility comes a lot of, you know, a lot of fixes every year to get it up and running. It's been well maintained, but it definitely is in time for reinvestment just because of the age of the facility. So, we're estimating that project cost to be around $3 million. It would include the pool liner and a lot of the, the concrete work around it, and some improvements with the zero-depth entry kiddie pool. And our process, just to inform you, was a little bit different this year. We looked at staff across the whole park system at what are the major capital needs to really get a big picture view of the true cost that we're looking at. And we looked at the major needs, and then we also looked at if they're the priority level, if they're, you know, in the next few years, are they medium, are kind of lower priority, but we still need to have them on our list on the horizon. And this is kind of how guiding us as we move forward, we'll be adding to it and updating it, but it's a nice snapshot of really the condition and what kind of upgrades and reinvestments need to be made across the park system. And I'll be working with Director Asher in the coming years to really look at across the city, all of our facilities, and making sure their inventory and the condition and the true cost of, of updating and renovating them.
Couple?
Just a quick question. We've been talking about community gardens and mentioned no-name parks, so is that not considered one of our facilities? It's not on here? I know like Apple Blossom just says blank, but.
Yeah. No, it's not up here, the community garden projects. We have funding kind of outside of this identified for it, so we wouldn't need to include it in this.
But I meant as part of, the park itself is not up there.
Oh, yeah, there's just nothing immediate at Apple Blossom that needs to be done.
No, the no-name park is what I'm asking about.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, it just doesn't have any facilities there, so it's not even on the list right now.
Okay.
And I would love to, in the coming year, look at properly naming the green space as a rich hill park.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
So, I just wanted to relay a question that I asked the city manager last week, which is just like, I'm glad to see this and to start to see these price tags, but it seems like it's all kind of replacement or maintenance of the existing, and I guess I am wondering long-term, how do we get to knowing that we have like the right amount of facilities? Like, if a park doesn't currently have a playground, there's no way through this list that it gets a new playground, or other things like that?
Yeah, I think, you know, long-term, we'd monitor a needs assessment and do a lot of public engagement on what is needed, because that's something I've been talking with staffers about, it doesn't make sense to maintain some of these facilities, does it? You know, instead of maintaining a building, you know, at a park that may get used a week or two out of the year, would it be better serving residents if we have picnic shelters that could be used every day? So, we're just starting to look at some of those questions, and I think, and some sort of needs assessment with the community would be something we'd like to plan on the horizon. In relation to Wood Lake Nature Center, how are the conversations going for partnerships to fill those $7 million? Like, can we talk to the folks, the organizations that support the beacons programming, the why, and the, what is it? But I just feel like that gap, $7 million, given the role that, that, that the center plays in the whole region and in the state, like, I feel like there's no way we can't not get money from partnerships on that. And how can the rest of us on that, how can us, how can we on the council help with that? I mean, and, and I said this before, but everybody talks about investing in equity, and it's like, time to put your money where your mouth is with this project. And so, I really want to push to do whatever we can to help in advancing those partnerships, but I feel like we should be able to get that $7 million to what we need to help. I totally agree. You know, manager Paul Smithson and I, we're just right now kind of at a infancy level with a lot of the partner conversations and making a list of who makes sense to really reach out to, so had, we're entitled to help in that capacity. So, I think we're at the early stages, so if you have ideas or other council members or colleagues that we could, you know, reach out to these organizations, we would be willing to.
All right, looks like we're ready to go to the next presentation. Is that correct? Oh, Councilmember Wayland, do you have a question?
Just a comment as we're switching, that I, I know we talked about in strategic planning, the need to be doing a lot more of these like long-term financial plans and asset plans and all that. I just wanted to thank staff that, I know we're not yet into implementing the strategic plan, we haven't even finalized it yet, but it's exciting to see that that's already happening, and it's very needed, and makes me feel a lot more confident in our future. So, thank you.
All right, Ray Roll? All right, Mayor and Council, thanks for having me here tonight. We're going to go over the American Rescue Plan funds and the projects that staff are proposing to accomplish with those. Pick over the, what we're discussing, first just general history of ARPA, secondly, the project selection process, and then third, the actual proposed projects. So, there's a quick summary of ARPA, 1.9 trillion in March 11th of 2021, $350 billion for state and local governments, Richfield got $3.9 million. I think something really important is that the funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024. Must be spent by December 31st, 2026. Any remaining funds will be returned, so let's not have that happen. Here's a quick summary, or not a quick summary, here's the provisions of what ARPA initially were able to be used for. Quick summary of that is replacing lost revenue, smart supporting COVID-19 health and economic responses, premium pay for workers, and then water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Specifically in the corner, this was what initially this funds were able to be used for. There's a rule, secondary ruling in January 6th of this year that I'll talk about a little bit later, that gave us a little bit more broad use of them. Here is what the funds cannot be used for, which is offset reduction taxes, deposit and pension funds, funding debt service, just sort of these rainy day items. The really wonderful thing that we got earlier this year was that basically there was an assumption of revenue loss without cities having to go and do very thorough estimations, so we can take up to $10 million, depending on what our ARPA amount is, and just assume that as revenue loss, and kind of use that for general fund expenditures. So, the city has opted earlier this year to do the $3.9 million as just general revenue loss, so we have a little reflex million how we use that. Here are some funds or some projects we have already approved. This is about $1.3 million, so we have $2.6 million remaining. At that note, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager, and she can discuss the project selection process.
Thank you. So, actually, working with directors to come up with a recommended list for the remaining funding is probably one of my favorite projects that I've done in Richfield. It is so easy to get divided and territorial about funding, especially when you have scarce funding, and that absolutely did not happen. I'd like to think that the process helped, but I think it was directors working together. They were really focused on city priorities, and, and that made the list better. This is the criteria that we used. You know, we have to respond to COVID and the resulting impact, but we also are already shifting our focus to try and make sure we're aligning resources to those strategic priorities that you outlined during our, our strategic plan. Also, we have, because this is one-time funding, we're trying to make sure that we're using it, minimizing its use for ongoing costs. And, you know, we tried to use this historic funding to have a long-term impact as much as possible. This is the proposed projects ranking. So, the, the top project got the, basically, the most votes and won the leadership to the non-down. We did not actually vote, the mural was a, a last-minute addition, but we did have a meeting to discuss it. And then this is how it breaks down, by funding category among different cities. Now, some of the cities have not, have not allocated all of their ARPA funds, but this was what they had allocated to date. As you can see, all cities are using a pretty big, except for the Golden Park, a pretty big chunk of the funds for, for infrastructure. And Apple Valley actually planned to use all of it. So, I will now turn it over to the departments that are leading the projects and let them give you a few more details on it. And first up is our chief building official, Chad Lender.
If you could take a seat if you want, I'd wherever you're, I'm just sitting here.
Council? Yeah, we're looking at the permitting software for upgrading the software implementation for electronic plan view. Right now, the software that we're using doesn't allow us to do digital plan view, and departments on where they're at with everything, which takes a lot of our time. We're not giving good service to the, so, the credit cards, the expansion, I said accessible services, so.
I'll just, I'm sorry if I jump in.
Absolutely.
So, I think one of the, the key selling points with this is the fact that it does cover multiple departments. Chief Wood has been next to Chad, kind of working through the, the software validation process as well. We've had public works, we've had public safety as part of that as well. So, this does allow us the opportunity to do plan review across multiple departments instead of sharing a plan's copy, the paper plans that get scanned, and so this is actually a huge upgrade, and the efficiency that we expect is going to be, I don't even know that we can quantify the level of change that this software would bring. So, this is that big.
Yes, and the cost savings overall will be from not having to scan the plans, not having to store them, and again, just. And again, just, just the ability to get the plan review done, but the time saving from department to department, not chasing the plans around, so.
Question?
Yeah, I, I would just add that even on the other end, if you're a developer or somebody that's waiting on comments, right now they're getting like 10 different, well, not 10, five different lists of things and file one. And this way, I think it's interactive with the, with our engineers can also output in my place.
Uh, for us in Public Safety, I think it would be really a game changer, as Mike talked about. Um, right now, we do all our licensing sort of the old-style way by, you know, people bringing packets. Even in the renewal process, that's the only way we have to do that. If we had the software, everything would be electronic. It would be fast. It would save a lot of time with our part-time staff to be able to do all that renewal uh, electronic.
So follow-up on it, does that also then include, like, if somebody wants to add in addition to their house or smaller projects, that'll all go electronic?
Yes, it will, absolutely. So they would still have the ability to take the plan, uh, at the counter if, if they have no other way of doing it. Um, but it, it should free up a lot of that, uh, and the ability to track it from, so everything that the plan reviewer is doing, they'll be able to see right, uh, right online and comment back and forth and track it the whole, through the beginning step to the end, so.
That's helpful because I was hearing that feedback from people that they wanted it to go electronics.
Yeah.
Almost every architect would prefer to have an electronic submittal as opposed to printing the paper. Because every time they print a sheet, somebody goes and says, you know what, I need to move that out with six inches. And then they have to print a new sheet. This takes all of that away.
Plus the time for us to track that when they have to do that sheet to move it.
All right, Kat.
I think this electronics thing sounds like a fad. No, I, I, I do have a, just a real, a real question. Um, and I just, as, by, by experiencing uh, the permitting process in Minneapolis due to COVID, they closed the window and the ability to get interaction or feedback has fallen off the cliff and it's really challenging. And I, I'm really glad to hear that the window would still be open and that people won't lose the opportunity to connect with staff, uh, which has never been the spirit of staff in Richfield that I, that I've known. But I just wanted to, to highlight that.
No, that's an important part to keep with.
I have a, uh, it might be a separate but related question and it might be outdated, but I remember having conversations with city manager Rodriguez about doing, um, an audit or inventory or assessment of our technology and software. Was that done and?
Yep, it's in the budget and it's, and it's planned, yes, so. Questions? So, um, I'm going to pass it over to Assistant City Manager Tom Vann, but I also wanted to say, both of these number one and number two, uh, projects, not only are they resulting in better customer service and operational excellence, but it also is allowing us to work smarter, so to be more efficient with our time, which, as you know, has also been a challenge, like stabilizing our workforce.
Thank you, uh, you councilmembers. Of course, this is project one, or project two, uh, kind of pulling all in the same theme and trying to project one, uh, efficiency is, is, I mean, factor in a lot of this, but also in terms of providing services to internally and external clients. Uh, one of the things that, you know, that currently right now, we're on Office 2010. And of course, 2010, uh, the end of life was in, or 2010, the end of life was in 2020. So what that means is that, uh, tech support, there wasn't tech support, uh, no more patches and no more updates for security. That's a huge factor in terms of, yeah, uh, operation with security. And one of the things that we're going to be doing in the quarter, in the third offer, a security assessment of the city and all the facilities, uh, internally and externally. Uh, the funding request would cover license and install for quarter three of 2022. And then it would also cover license for 2020. As, uh, departments will have to fund that in 2024. Of course, with this, uh, we're going to look at, there's a, two different items for it. There's this subscription base, which will be forty of the licensing of, uh, the employees, but also there are terminals or computers that are used by multiple staff members that sell the, uh, technical hardware installed for them or the office, it's a 365. But again, uh, the subscription base is us and it's going to range. Well, you have to take that into account for budget.
Question about that, is there going to be accompanying training, um, for optimization of the programs and training on how to utilize them and things like that?
Uh, current, there, Microsoft does a really good job in providing kind of YouTube videos for those trainings. So we'll go through that. Uh, looking at implementation, looking at install. Uh, the, the first step of install will be within IT department. Uh, they'll take a look at any bugs or any questions that they may have. And then from there, the second phase of the implementation will per user group. And from there, we'll, we'll request individuals from different departments to be part of the, the there. If, if that is successful, we'll start implementing it to, to various departments. One of the main focus is, is that we, we do want to make sure that we, as a first priority for the city in the implementation of 365, is making sure that it, it first priority after we implement that and then we'll move on to the
How does the cost include migration of existing females and other stuff that's currently in your old system? Or would users be starting fresh?
Um, we'll have to take a look at it. Uh, right now, the, there is a cap, a cap for storage. And we have a number of staff members that have seen that cap, so we're still going to have to take a look at that. Sure, it's a beginning process. We'll have to tell the staff that there will need to be a process to purge
That's a gasp.
So we'll have to take a, uh, look at part of the 250,000 dollars because the licensing, what does include the installs and the work with our, uh, with Logis and R.
Thanks. Any more questions?
So project three is additional social worker. Um, obviously our goal would be to add a full-time social worker to be resourced for all the departments. Uh, currently, the one that we have now that, uh, we placed in early January is a resource to all the departments. What we're finding is there's even more submitting a community need, thought. Um, and we're dealing with a lot of issues regarding hoarding, regarding mental health and things like that. And our current social worker is doing a great job by walking people through the process and making sure that they have the resources that they need rather than just say, call this number. Um, she is also going out with our officers, uh, on different calls that she needs to go on to make sure that those services are actually in place, um, to make sure that she follows up and, and they need additional, that that's being taken care of. Um, we're working with a lot of different county agencies, um, not only Wilmington Public Health, because we're a own public city or a public health, uh, entity, but also with the county. And the resources that a social worker can provide, uh, from the county level is extraordinary. So we're looking at adding that additional social worker, not just to work with public safety, but to work with all the departments. Uh, different things can come up in fire, uh, in Public Works and Community Development and Recreation, uh, and some of the other departments. And so we want to make sure that we, we've got the full gamut of services covered that we can provide to individual residents. Um, and that's what we're seeing currently right now. More importantly, uh, with hoarding and things like that, um, our current social worker is probably going to get overwhelmed. And that's what we don't want to see happen because we want to make sure that those services are continually provided.
Project four is a splash pad that we're proposing. Uh, we would be proposing it adjacent to the pool facility at Veterans Park. We have space for it on the south side of the pool. And manager Wyman and I took a splash pad tour, which was a, a fun day. Uh, we went and met with other city officials and other municipalities, looked at five different splash pads. Some were in pool facilities, some were out, some were in neighborhood parks, some were big, um, you know, citywide parks. So we asked a lot of questions about maintenance and this park really makes sense. I know that a lot of people would like to see, you know, a splash pad in a number of the parks in Richfield, but things that are unique to this location is that it would be staffed the majority of the time, which would be great for emergencies. Uh, on the fringe seasons, we would be able to open it on the weekends in May and September. Um, we do have sat staff on location though, still even on those weekends. We have the plumbing and mechanicals already laid underneath the ground for it. It would be a line off of that. So it would save us a lot of money with the underground infrastructure. And one thing we looked at on our tour is the mechanicals. They have to be housed. And so if we went to a different park, we would also have to build a house to put all the mechanicals and operating equipment in, which would increase the cost. And also we looked at parking. And, you know, this sort of facility will draw people in and, and we don't have adequate parking at a lot of the other parks. Um, and then lastly too, we have staff on site daily that can check the water chemistry and any issues that pop up, um, so that we can be a lot more responsive on daily maintenance and checks. Uh, but this would be a great project that would be, um, aligned a lot with our equity and inclusion goals. Uh, in working with Free Rivers Park District, they just got done with a focus group project that included Richfield and Wilmington. Um, the focus group included people of color that make under $50,000. And one of the top three activities, um, was more access to aquatics that they would like to see. We can't necessarily always offer the pool for free because of the cost to run it, but this would be a free facility that would help keep people cool, um, especially with our longer, hotter summers, um, that we're experiencing. Uh, in looking at some of the core elements that make a great splash pad, uh, we feel like $750,000 would be, you know, an inadequate budget to work with, uh, in meeting some of the other city officials on our tour. And the things that they helped us really look at would be shading, seating, um, making sure we have the right type of fencing. Uh, and we would have access to our pool house with the splash pad here as well. So we'd have changing facilities and bathrooms, which would also help offset some costs if we were having to build it completely, um, at a different park.
Um, I was just curious, I'm looking at a map here, where does it fit? You said south of the pool?
Yeah, so we would have to change the fence lines of the pool where you go into the zero-depth entry area. The fence line would be brought up closer to that and it would be the area kind of from the parking lot up to where that zero-depth entry is. And when you go over and kind of look at the space, it would fit quite nicely. So it would go with kind of the length of the, the pool there on the south side.
And then it would be outside the fence so that anyone could get to it?
Yep, yep. So we were, uh, talking with manager Ryan, we were looking at potentially doing wristbands. So people would come in one entrance and have access to the pool and have a wristband. And then the other entrance would have you go into the splash pad.
I was, I was just curious what you said about, and I've, I've not been to the pool since I was like eight years old. So I assume you pay and then you get access like into the building, right? So how do you use the changing rooms if you're going to the splash pad and not paying?
Yeah, we talked, even elaborate if you want.
So the changing rooms are available from the outside, so it's not on the inside of the fence line.
Okay, so it is totally free even if people use that facility?
Mm-hmm.
I, sorry, one more. Just that, I guess I'm, I'm both really excited about this and also looking at, I mean, of the, the projects, it is one of the more expensive ones. Um, I know we also have, uh, not listed here because we already decided it. The most expensive was 65th Street. But I guess I'm curious from the rest of council or staff's perspective too, of spending three-quarters of a million dollars on a new thing when we have $23 million of funding we need for, to maintain existing things. Um, and I, I don't disagree that this is worth doing, but feel like we should talk through that side of things.
Yeah, no, I think it's a policy decision where the money should be spent. Um, I think another factor is relevancy. Uh, most of our youth that go to the pool, um, you know, the surrounding communities all have splash pads, uh, and that free facility, charter transportation might be an issue or access. Um, and I think having something in your own town that you can bike to or walk to that's free, um, we, we keep as relevant. Um, and also really, you know, a good, a good push for equity and inclusion that we have something for everyone to do regardless of cost. Um, but yeah, I mean, we have capital needs a lot and I think they're always going to be there. We need to keep reinvesting and, and staying relevant with our surrounding communities and for our residents. It also is in our park master plan. It's very similar to the dog park and it's something I hear residents want repeatedly. Uh, they want a splash pad. So I feel like this would be a way, um, it would be hard for us to come up with three-quarters of a million dollars in other parts of our budget, especially when we have those other bigger projects going like the Woodlake Nature Center and potentially the Pool Liner. Um, this would be a way we could, you know, hopefully get this one achieved and not, um, struggle so much to find the funding. But I think it's a great, it's a good question to think about.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it, it is a good question and it is a policy decision. I will say though, Woodlake Nature Center, we have the chance to leverage funding from the federal level, the state level, probably do fundraising, um, and, and you wouldn't be able to do that for a splash pad.
Comments on the question?
I guess I'm particularly curious, since the Pool Liner has come up as a larger expense, how, what was the timeline and when that is happening? Like, could this money just go towards to fly that down? Or, or is it aspect fast enough for the ARPA?
It, it could, uh, it could go towards that project. I mean, we are going to, like I said, we're presenting to you in September, uh, options for, or, uh, options and the process for a local option sales tax. Um, and one of the projects that we had hoped to explore would be Woodlake Nature Center, um, the balance or whatever we can't get from other sources, and then also the Pool Liner.
Just, just a couple of comments on the, on the splash pad. Yeah, with, with kids that utilize this all the time, I, my bias and my insight is it, it is utilized a lot. Um, I think there, there is a danger if we get too far behind other communities that the, the revenue that we generate will, will lose eventually. I really appreciate that as we're adding amenities, we're being more inclusive, not more exclusive in how we add those amenities. And that feels good and really important because I think a splash pad makes it more attractive for kids and families, but it also invites more families not saying, well, we, we're going to raise the price for, for, for new amenities and exclude more people. So I, I appreciate that. I'm a little, as the parent of small children, having like a open-to-the-public, uh, shower situation, I, I, I don't know, and maybe it's not a, not an issue, but that's, if there was, if there was no, there was no gatekeeping for, for anybody with kids and adults, I'm, I'm less worried now. I'd be a little more, and I'd just be a little more conscious of it if it were, if it were completely.
Are we, um, I know the idea has been thought of and I think in the, I know we didn't see the, uh, details of the capital improvement plan. Um, is a potential referendum for any of this still on the table as well?
I think it's, you know, one of the options we have to fill in the gap for Woodlake Nature Center would be a referendum and, and I, I think looking at our capital needs, the smartest way to do it would be to include some of the gap that we have for Woodlake, but also include other projects. So every single resident would be winning, um, whether it be the pool
So every single resident would be winning, whether it be the pool improvement. And as Kim and saying, we have other levers we can pull for the pool and Woodlake. This one maybe has a few less, but the referendum could include, you know, the aquatics improvement, field improvement, we could combine a few projects together. So hopefully every resident would be positively impacted.
All right, I just want to do a quick time check. Our, I'll just do, I'm just going to do one quick response to council member Waylon's question to the council. I'm comfortable spending this money in this way. I think council member Troutman articulated it well, but for the equity and access reasons and diversification of options for families, I, I'm comfortable.
Next up is social services, augmenting our funding and.
Sure, so we've seen this one before. We've, you've already dedicated some funds earlier this year to both Cornerstone and Veep. This is dealing with, for those who are most, have been very much directly impacted economically by the pandemic. The idea with this additional $300,000, we could augment our current social service budget, which is around $80,000 annually. Again, it addresses significant need, people that have been most impacted, providing support in the case of Cornerstone, domestic violence and with Veep is dealing with housing instability. Some of our other social service providers deal with mental health and food insecurity. Again, it'd be $300,000 to augment that budget. We find in the states and the county, we're very much involved in those direct immediate impacts at first. And they have gotten out of that business and, but we still see that there's some need that's left behind. And so I know some initial feedback was, well, what about doing some more long-term solutions? But I guess, I think we should also think about that there are still short-term impacts that I think we could fill that gap with these funds. What we would envision doing, Lynette Chambers is, you know, helps with our social services program. And we take a look at our current system and what our goals are for that. And I think take a, a fresh look at those and probably make some changes to that system for the next three years to, to use.
Council member Waylon?
Just want to, I have no doubt that all of the organizations and more that we support through this could use more money than it would get put to good use. I, I am thinking though of the short-term versus long-term impact. And I think this is, this is the only or the main proposal related to community development, even though I know that's one of our top, one of our five strategic plan priorities. I know the HRA, which I'm not on, gets the final decision on how the TIF money that has become more flexible will get spent. But I, I guess I, I'm fairly certain we would want some reassurance and eventually would love to, if the HRA finds it appropriate, have some amount of input on the decisions too. But will, will the funding that is being freed up on the HRA side be used for more of the long-term impact projects around affordability? And I mean, I know the, the full council cares a lot about the economic side as well. No one will be surprised to know I'm mostly focused on the housing affordability side. But will some of that be addressed there since it's not in this list?
So, so that's capital money, right? And so there is funding that's coming forward that we'll be able to transfer to our trust fund. And again, for capital costs, it can't go towards rent assistance or down payment assistance. More soft costs, it definitely be hard costs, but we have these all affordable projects coming forward that we are going to be able to offer funding to, to help deepen affordability, help fill gaps. It's certainly not going to fund whole projects, right? But it, it fills gaps and, and so it's an exciting opportunity on the capital side. I, I mean, we can certainly look at this, this 300,000 is so small in the, you know, it's a drop in the bucket for projects, although, though we were able to commit 200,000 to Richfield Flats project to increase the sustainability of the project, which will improve affordability and make them more competitive to get financed. So we can really use the money to leverage. So we could certainly use the 300,000 to leverage, but it's just not enough to make, I don't think, huge impacts. Whereas it, it, you know, it can provide a lot to an organization like Cornerstone to assist with some of the domestic violence challenges that they help us to address in the community. We can certainly look at some of that 300,000 to try to do more long-term because it can go to more soft costs to our social service organizations. It's just such a, not a huge amount to make, I don't know what kind of huge impacts we can make long-term. But we can certainly look at that. I think that Lynette and I talked today about, you know, there's a committee, a group, council member Supple has been part of, Camila DeSantis, Mary Olson and others who've been a part of that money for many years. And I think we want to talk to them. I think we want to talk to our social service providers, see if they have some ideas, some gap, you know. Maybe this money can be used to leverage in that arena as well.
Respond to council member Waylon's question. My understanding from being on the HRA, and please jump in, council member Supple, with your understanding answering on the HRA, is that yes, the money that the HRA has designated for affordable housing is for long-term, stable, affordable housing in ver, in many different ways and that the flexibility is focused on providing and getting more access to capital for more deeply affordable housing, which is really, has been hard for us to, to get. Member Troutman?
I have a question, maybe this is more for chief, chief Enthorn. Noticed in my practice, especially during the beginning of the pandemic, domestic violence calls that I got, anecdotally seem to go through the roof. I was just wondering, has that come down in your experience? Does, do our, Cornerstone seems like an incredible partner, has been for years. Is that, is, is that adequate to the, to the need? Terms of the services that they provide, are they, do they feel stretched thin? Almost every organization feels stretched thin now, but I was just kind of curious where, where those numbers were looking and whether Cornerstone was able to keep up with the, the need our community has for safety there.
I, council member Troutman, I think our numbers have dropped a little bit since post-pandemic. I mean, we have a contract with Cornerstone. Our contract goes for the, the work that is done with our prosecution team. And so, you know, we look at obviously supporting the victims of domestic violence. I think this money would probably go more towards the housing of victims and providing other resources, transportation. That where, when we work with them, we have the advocate there. So we have a separate contract in place that provides those services.
This is, this is not for the advocate. This is for, this is for ancillary services. Now I understand why it's in this budget.
It supports all of that. Yeah.
Ours does just the advocate, but having worked with Cornerstone and, and being on the board, you know, I see the services that they provide. And I think this money would go to good use to provide those services to a victim center.
I mean, that and that subcommittee, that we decide to give the money directly to the organizations and they tell us to use it, it's not funding staff here in the city, it's giving them resources.
Next up is the wage and classification study.
So I'm trying to make it quick because I know we have only a few minutes, but almost every municipality I've talked to has struggled with recruiting, retaining qual, or quality employees. And in the last year, the, the city has tried to adapt to some of the changing markets. Incentives for hiring police officers or incentives for seasonal in-person rec. There have been a number of different portions that we've done with the city. We've looked at adjusting the step and the wage for summer help in public works. Typically we hire about, I believe, Kristen, about 15 summer help. We've, we've gotten one, four, five, or maybe more now.
Six this year.
So, and then also we've had, we've also looked at the liquor. And looking at the various markets, other municipalities that we, that would draw from our employee base too. We increased the pay. I even found out last week that we lost employees in the city, partly because they're paying something. Those are some of the factors that we need to take a look at and that's the reason why we're recording our wage and cost commission study. Rent assistance would be about $75,000. That includes person with, but also, I wouldn't look at it, I got description.
Troutman?
I, I totally trust your, your judgment, so don't, the question is not meant to second guess that. Just to affirm you, assuming that it, that it is, I know $75,000 is a drop in the bucket for our budget. I also think when it comes to wages like that, it could go a long way in just raising wages. And so I just wanted to raise the question, you know, do we need a study to confirm we need to do that? Or, you know, as a, in terms of how to, how to use the tool? If that, if that was needed to, to just justify what you need to do rather than just feeling empowered to, to, to raise wages to be competitive? I just wanted to give you a chance, anybody a chance to speak to that.
Bert, then you can fill in. So first of all, we have an HR department of two people. We have such staff vacancies right now, it is, it is so hard to keep up. We also have heard through employee engagement surveys that our employees want more training and we need to provide more training. So it's not just the wages, we have to do other things to improve, to make, you know, make Richfield an employer of choice. Also the consultant, they're going to come in, they're going to have the contacts, they're going to be able to look at those competitive, those comps. But they're also going to be able to look at the classifications. So it's not just looking at, you know, do these positions, are, are we paying enough? But it's also, are they directly classified? So, and that, and we'll need the extra time and expertise to, to do that. All right, we can move on. I'm sorry, we're, I'm pushing people a bit because we're running out of time.
How many more do we have? Sorry.
What's that?
Two more?
No, I think there's 12, right?
12? Oh, 12, oh, okay, sorry.
I can be quick on this one.
Run seven.
Yeah. So this is basically an opportunity we saw to help assist people with the, the ashbor removals. We have 5,100 private ash trees in the city, estimated, and about 3,500 on average remove one of them. And they, at this point in time, there's, they're going to be removed, you know, they're going to end up with ashboring if you remove. So if you do the math, it ends up being about $17 million on private cost that they're just going to have to take on. Businesses, and so we thought, well, there's an opportunity here to try to take the burden off of some people. And so we just suggested this. And if it's funded at whatever it is, I'd say if there was talk about reallocating funds from, we would probably want to see at least 300 to make it. And then when it, it wouldn't be, once the money's gone, it's gone. Right now, and then we would have to come to another council, workshop, talk about.
I'll just say statements instead of asking questions for time. This sounds good, this amount of money sounds good. I'm hoping that this is some sort of matching grant, even if I'm income qualified, that we're paying like half or a third or something, so we're encouraging private. And then my last suggestion would be requiring people put a replacement tree in when they're benefiting from it. So we don't have people just clear cutting their property.
Waylon?
I guess I'll, I'll just say I'd pass this on to staff. I, I think this is great. I think people are going to have to do it. It's going to cost more money than people have. I also though, with sustainability being, I mean, it's a subheading of one of our strategic priorities. Frankly, I, I, I've brought this up many times before. I would like us to see us doing more to directly address climate change, which to me, like this is sustainability related. But I think directly addressing and reducing fossil fuel usage is the most important piece of addressing climate change. And so I was a little disappointed that none of our proposed projects spoke to that. I don't, we also have staffing limitations. And so I don't know that we could create a whole new project and have anyone to be able to lead it. But that's, so again, most of my comments, none of this is bad, but that is something I saw and was hoping for something a little more exciting and innovative.
I'll also make my comments not, not, not questions, but, but, and talking about the, the means testing and, you know, doing half or, or a third, you know, for some folks, at, at any level, pretty so expensive to remove. They're, they're having programs in the past of financing it or amateurizing it. Do we still, all right.
Yes.
That would, that's, that's it. I just want to make sure that that was still an option proposed, thanks.
All right, let's move on to the next one and try to get through these risks.
All right, mayor and council, the next project is continued funding our equity work. So this is one of those really great timing projects where we can use this money to actually look at performing a equity plan for the city in the coming years. This will also go to help training, also go to help actually tracking strategic initiatives. Part of that is getting a public facing dashboard, which we can also use to track not only the equity work we're doing, but a lot of the work we're doing across the city and other departments too. This will also help costs or help cover the costs for the translation and interpretation services.
Comments? I'll just do one really quick, translation can be, and interpretation can be expensive. So just being really strategic about things that we can translate and have minimal changes to that are just standard types of documents and things would be great. Great?
For us, it's additional CSO, part-time CSO to the two that we have along with the timbral compliance officer. Obviously it's to increase the system, community members, property maintenance issues or concerns, specifically relating to working, months and months and months to work through along with mental health issues. And support police to take some non-emergency calls, which they've been doing. Obviously our training ground for our PD officers, officer Steve Bobera there to the left was just internally promoted to police officer, warrant raised in Richfield, went to the Richfield schools and now lives in Richfield and is one of our police officers. So that's what project nine is.
Questions or comments? Council member Troutman?
Really, I just want to say thank you, chief. And I'm fully supportive of all the, the staff investments. And you, you're responsible for not just police, but public safety. And love to, and we know that hiring police officers is, is a challenge. But also this is, this is, I, I trust one of the tools that we have to support our officers. And so, good work and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add, I think there's a great opportunity to keep building connections between our CSOs and equity committees. And people understand, because in some ways this department has a bad rep, like, oh, they're the people that come out when I, I'm fighting with my neighbors and they're complaining. But they're also really, 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 but they're really great resources and, and community members to connect with, with our residents and, and staff. And so I just think there's an opportunity there.
Agreed. Yep, project ten, project ten is responding to COVID-19, continuing to support for COVID-19 response. Obviously PPE outreach to our underserved communities, things like that. Additional emergency response management response training, which consists of scenarios, plans, exercises with all departments, including elected officials. Obviously we want to be prepared for the next man-made or, or natural disaster. Knock on wood, hopefully Lucky Fox does not become a public health emergency. So just looking to have a, a more robust response than what we have right now. Even though our, our plans are in place, we're good for the most part. We need to be ready for the next man-made or natural disaster.
I have the last one. It's a community mural at Galaxy Dues and the Richfield Leadership Network would be Jace. We've put in a nice proposal that had a nice process to it. So at 7144 Chicago Avenue, Galaxy Dues, they would like to construct a mural on the south-facing wall that would really kind of honor the diverse representation of Richfield and the different cultures. And they are looking at $30,000 art installation. They did a great job on due 25th with a block party. I think they had 92 surveys with community engagement on what themes the art should include. And so they're working with two artists to put together. And I think Thursday we're going to be taking a look at it with Beep. And I think Thursday, we're going to be taking a look at it with DJ, what some of the final ideas are. And then the timeline is they would like to start actually painting sometime this fall. It's a $30,000 art project. We have committed five so far, and we'd like to commit through the ARPA funding another five just to help her reach their goal and get it funded and painted. And I think it will bring a lot of healing and it will provide representation to our community throughout the pandemic. I think it will be a kind of a bright spot.
Comments?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that the splash pad, and I mean, we have a very diverse list, right? But the splash pad and the community mural, they're very tangible benefits from the ARPA money. And I just compared it to like the WPAI projects during the depression, you know, and this is something that the community can see and feel, like, this was built with ARPA funds or helped build with ARPA funds.
Okay, questions or feedback? We've got about seven minutes or less. Councilmember Whelan?
What is, can you speak, staff, speak to the timeline? I'm assuming this is not our final approval of this. And I would, I would love more discussion just amongst us, but also don't want to delay when these can actually get started. So what is the current process?
I was hoping to bring it to council meeting, to have you vote on it. But we have a pretty tight timeline in terms of trying to find time at work sessions. I mean, we could probably carve out 15 more minutes for a work session. I heard comments on most of the projects.
Would, would it be appropriate, would council be open to? I know our, tonight's meeting is fairly short. Could we add some discussion time at the end of that? Is that even allowed?
I mean, you've got the, you've got the experts in the room right now, so I think that if you want to ask questions, I mean, we have a few more minutes.
I, I don't have more questions. I would like to discuss, and I guess if all four of my colleagues are saying, this is, this is the plan, I'm good, let's go, then I, my questions don't matter. But I guess knowing, knowing how historic this moment is, that we don't get options like this, I was hoping for a little more conversation, potentially some edits or ideas. I know staff has had months to be thinking of editing these, and this is the first we're really digging into it.
Are there comments or questions, thoughts from council members? And then can we have a first reading and have that time on the council agenda for a discussion before a second reading or a vote?
I mean, it's not a first and read, second reading because it's not coordinates. It's just, it would just be a resolution approving the projects. I mean, I can certainly look at the work sessions and see if we can add 15 minutes. I, I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant because if you have suggestions that you want us to explore, I'd like to be able to have the staff resources to inform those.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I just want to say, I'm generally comfortable with the project that I've heard from, but I think Councilmember Whelan has raised questions and other ideas that I hadn't really considered until I heard you say them. So particularly the comment about sustainability and things that sort of reduce the ARPA footprint of the city. And that occurred to me, they were not on the list of potential projects we previously saw, they're not here tonight. So if you were prepared to, and others are okay with that, I would be fine very well with that at the end of the council meeting. I appreciate wanting to have the staff in the room, going, got like three minutes here, so I hope that's fair to really explore that idea. I would be happy to discuss it more tonight, personally, council wants that, and hopefully that could at least give direction for the city manager to bring back to staff. Something we want to explore.
Councilmember Seppel?
I'd be fine if we like discussed it during the city manager report, if that would be the appropriate place.
Sure.
And then I had a separate question about further discussion. We had two different spreadsheets that talked about the impact of the Wood Lake Nature Center. Are we going to come back and talk more about that during a work session when we're discussing possibilities of local sales tax and all the impact? Then I'll save my questions for that, as long as we'll get another shot at that, I'll, we'll talk then.
I can carve some time out, August 17th as well.
Councilmember Troutman, are you fine with having this further discussion during the council meeting? And I am too. I'll just say I am generally okay and pleased with the plan proposed by staff. And I think there's some long-term standing things that have really needed some investment, and I'm really happy to see that, and new investments especially focused on equity. So I'm supportive and open to the conversation. Councilmember Troutman?
I was just going to say too, I, it seems like we're accomplishing a lot, and I know our budget is increasing slightly, but our budget is increasing less than the rate of inflation. So I am also just recognizing that that's a functional budget cut, and we have these projects. And so, great work, everybody. I know it doesn't come free or easy, involves sacrifices, so thank you.
Thank you so much to all our staff for the preparation of resources. Two presentations and budget proposals, thank you, and your work on this. Again, more unprecedented, local things that you continue to lead in. Thank you, and I will adjourn our work sessions.